I'd like to open up the Wednesday March 2006 Council Meeting. Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Councilmember Werner. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Can everybody please rise for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection, please? Plagues allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coast and the Star Ledger on January 6, 2016, and posted on a bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file in the city clerk. First business is proclamation recognizing Key West Reunion Day, May 14, 2016.
Just so everyone knows, I've known Carol Torre for years, and while businesses she had were before my time, I didn't come until 2000, I've spent a lot of time in other bars and heard about all of her businesses and what she's given back to the city. So I'm personally, and this council is personally really happy to honor her with a proclamation today. Whereas the city of Asbury Park has always prided itself on being a city of inclusion, whereas during the 1970s to the late 1990s, the city's economics were, to say the least, challenging for business owners. And whereas very few business owners that invested in the city and catered to the gay woman population, whereas three local businesswomen gave new life to the abandoned Albion Hotel, they created the Key West Hotel, a place to unwind, meet friends, future loves, party, swim, or dance the night away. And whereas in 1982, the Albion was ready for its second life and was renamed Key West Hotel. And whereas for many New Jersey gay women, the Key West Hotel was the beginning of becoming comfortable with their identity. And whereas the city of Asbury Park wishes to document the work of Carol Torre, Camille Neto, and Kay Sanfilippo in supporting and furthering the well-being and the rights of gay women in New Jersey and beyond. Whereas May 14, 2016, there shall be a Key West reunion to remember the past, enjoy the memories of the 1980s, and our hopes for the future. The city of Asbury Park proclaims May 14, 2016, Key West Reunion Day.
Yes, I have it written down.
Nice job.
Thanks.
We'll move on to matters by the city council.
Last week, I had the pleasure of being a judge for...
We.
The we had the pleasure of being judges for the Jet program. And that's a program that promotes entrepreneurial services for young people in our middle school. Right now, there are sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. They present a, their business plan, the products that they're going to sell. They do a whole series of services, and they work together. On April 9, at Mama's University, there's going to be a show called Maid in Mama. And our kids are going to be there selling their products. And I would ask everybody, please go out and support them because they have done an excellent job. The products they've made are going to surprise you and amaze you. And I just want to congratulate the program, the mentors, and everybody that works with them.
Jesse?
No comments.
I'm going to just do a quick run-through. We don't have to go in depth on the ones that I did Monday night. The city now has online bill pay for taxes and sewer, so you don't have to come in or mail your bill in. You can pay it online. Just to recap, mercantile licenses, because we've gotten some emails from people unhappy about the late fee. The city sent out a reminder in November advising people that your mercantile license was due March 1. In January, we sent out another reminder saying your mercantile license is due March 1, and if you don't pay it by March 1, you're going to get a late fee. People who paid it after March 1 got a late fee. So, you know, I just want to be clear that we did send out two reminders. I'm not sure that there's a whole lot we could do other than that. We also put it on our social media. Quarterly newsletters, we talked about doing that Monday. I think the city's doing a great job in reaching people via our Facebook and our Twitter and our website. But we thought, because the city of Asbury Park has so many seniors, many of which who may or may not be on, online, or may or may not be catching things on AP-TV that we're going to start to put out, or try to, put out quarterly newsletters to try to reach everybody, but including many people, many of the seniors. We have a number of senior towers, and I'm just not sure that they're getting the information via Twitter. Right? The AP-TV stuff for the Main Street sign? Done.
Michael, you're going to explain this?
Yes.
Oh, I do want to say, and I said it Monday night, thank you to Madison Marquette, Tim Donnelly, and a number of people who put on the Cold War event. It, to me, is the epitome of an event we should have in Asbury Park. It was a success with a few hundred people there.
Yvonne, I apologize, I thought you should talk about the parade, about the judges and parade, which was a fabulous ordeal.
Matters by the city manager.
Thank you. This afternoon, the city received notification from the Department of Transportation that we have been selected to receive funding from the DOT's Fiscal Year 2016 Municipal Aid Program for Fourth Avenue Improvements, which is repaving sewer work in the amount of $341,247. This will start a long and arduous process of paperwork designed. There's no timeframe for when the work will begin, but we did receive $341,000. Thank you.
Matters by the city attorney.
Yes, mayor and council, you will see that there is a resolution that is on the agenda this evening relating to the opening of the proposals concerning the pedal boat operation on the Wesley Lake. The opening of the RFPs was this morning. There was only one entity that submitted a proposal, and it was the entity that had the concession for the prior five years. And the package was reviewed by city staff, and everything was deemed to be in order. The amounts that were offered by the vendor exceeded the minimum amounts that were set forth in the RFP. So there is a resolution for council's consideration to award the concession for a three-year period of time to the same entity that had it previously. And that was Sunshine Productions LLC, trading as Asbury Park Pedal Boats.
May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting, please?
Move it.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and after appropriate warning, may terminate any further comments from the speaker. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and when you come up to the mic, please state your name and address for the record.
Robert Weiner, 601 Madison. This is going to be like an Academy Award speech. You have three minutes, so I'm going to rush through it. We talked about, I gave out everybody some information about the program. Yvonne Clayton gave you some information about it. It's been a 12-week program. We have 22 children still in the program right now. In fact, a couple of the students and entrepreneurs are still right here. This program was brought to Asbury Park last year by Frank Syfex and graciously accepted by Paul McKeveli and Roger Boyce at the Business Development Center of Interfaith Neighbors. So they funded our second year, so we hope there's going to be a third year. I also want to thank Wendy and James at the Kula Cafe, who have fed these children each and every time they've arrived with healthy snacks and food. This is a big thank you to Hira Hera at AP-TV, who's in the back there. He wound up at the Maid in Mama Fair last year, and then he came to me at the beginning of this year, and he said, "I would really like to see this program from the beginning, how it started." Because these youngsters come in there, they have no idea why they're there, except we're going to make them into business people. So when you see AP-TV documentary that Hira's been working on, he's been there every step of the way, from selecting a product to naming a business, even today where we were manufacturing all day today our team's product. So a thank you to Hira. And then Yvonne Clayton, I just want to let you know you were voted best judge second year in a row. And actually, by a vote of five to one today, the children listened to you and changed their pricing from $4 each to two for $6, to two for $7, as you recommended. And the vote was five to one. So we have some great mentors, really hardworking people. Charles Simmons is the guy who is really running this program, and he's not here tonight. Aside from being a great mentor, if you thought it wasn't hard enough being a mentor, try driving home 18 children at different stops in Asbury Park when we started in February in the dark. And we dropped off all 18 children, and we do every single week. We drive everybody home to make sure everybody gets home safely. So the program is great. It's probably been one of the most rewarding things that I've been involved in. And, you know, I'd like some of our other mentors to just speak, so thank you.
I got my new three minutes. Good evening, my name is Sheila Etienne, 518 Sewell Avenue, and I'd like to speak further on the Jets program. It's an excellent opportunity. I'm a first-time mentor this year, being that I own a business in Asbury Park. But my son has participated for the last two years. He comes home with language that you wouldn't expect an 11-year-old to know. He like, he has like Keystone, and he understands the concept of opening, running a business, borrowing money, paying it back, and all of that. Also, as an expansion of the Jets program, last year, they did a coding workshop for them in August. So I would just like the city to consider working in addition with the Jets program because these are kids that are hungry to learn, and they're sponges. They're absorbing everything. So I just want to take the opportunity to put it out there. It's successful. These kids are hungry, they're thirsty for more knowledge, and they're very open to possibilities. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Frank Syfex, 1403 Banges Avenue in Asbury Park. I got a, first, I want to say a lot of thank yous. Thank you to the city for using the senior center for our Shark Tank Business Plan Presentation. You guys are always on board with everything that we do in this city, so I just want to say thank you personally. Also, I'd like to thank Interfaith Neighbors, Paul, and Roger, and the Kula Cafe with all the food that they provided for us at the business presentation, for a meet and greet with the parents, and also so much driving with James from the Kula Cafe that takes the guy, picks him up in the morning, in the evening, and then also sometimes drops him off. Also, I want to thank Our Lady of Macomo that has a bus with the driver so they make sure that the kids get to their destination. So everything is safe, nobody's walking to the house or anything, they drop him right off there. Also, I want to be able to thank to our mentors, Sheila, Michael, you guys stand up, please. Michael Mills, Sheila, Isaac Jones over there, Robert Weiner, and where's the, oh, Jan, Jan Spowell. Dean Mentor, y'all got to give these guys a hand because they have really, really worked. Isaac, not only is he an entrepreneur, but also mentor, but also entrepreneur in the city. He used to have a barber shop on Springwood, on Prospect Avenue. Now he has relocated to Asbury Avenue, right? And he, I mean, this man here has come from the street. To be able to teach young people entrepreneurship, I think is a blessing. And we need something like this for our young people on the West Side to really start doing some things. So I thank you guys. I thank Mr. Charles Simmons, our executive director. Sometimes I don't even know wherever he sleeps because he's always, always making sure where we're going to pick the kids up at, where we're going to drop them off, make sure that our mentors is on track with everything. They, he is fantastic. So I thank you, Mr. Charles Simmons. I know you might be looking at TV or whatever the case may be. Also, I want to thanks to our parents. You brought your daughters here tonight. Without the parents, they wouldn't be able to do what they do. You guys make sure that they're on time and everything, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Also, I'd like to thank to the, what was it? Oh, the buses, okay, we did that. Thanks to the Black Rocket that came last summer. My time over already? Oh, my God. Well, can I just say one thing? I just want to say to Madison Marquette, to I-STAR, to all our business owners on the East Side, on the beachfront, please donate some money to our program. Make your checks out to Interfaith Neighbors. I'm doing the soliciting tonight. So we don't want to lose these children. Their minds are wide open. So I thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bess McCarthy, Cookman Avenue. First of all, I have a few questions I want to ask. So one is, I want to know if the sewer bills have been corrected yet. That'll be one, you can get back to me on that. This Saturday, when I came into work, there was food, greasy wrappers, plates, forks, knives, all over the front of my store. I'm constant, you know, so I was like, what is this now? There's always something. And fell across the street that lives there, 2:00 in the morning, all this noise out there. There's a food cart parked in front of my store, you know, with all these people getting out of the bars. I want to know what is going, we have had more nuisance with all this alcohol. I want to know what the plan is. Does every establishment that comes in get, can serve liquor? I mean, they've broken every single planner on our block. They've ripped out, last year, every plant that you plant, they pull them, they throw them on the ground. I, just throw up everything else on the street out there. I'm really sick and tired of it. And another thing I have is, and I want answers for this, the events committee, you know, you approve all these things down there. Last year, you had the zombies here. You closed off the 600 block, the 700 block of Cookman, from Madison to Lake Avenue, from 8:00 in the morning, you had, I don't know how many police out there. We had no, no one could pick, we had no customers all day. The event was on the boardwalk. And Jackie Pappas is like, "Oh, it was a wonderful event. We have thousands, I'll come show you a picture. We had thousands of people." I said, "Where'd you take the picture?" "Off of the Paramount." I said, "Well, what'd you close our streets off for?" "So at 4:00, they could parade down." They didn't close off all the other streets so they could parade from the boardwalk. You better think about closing these streets down for Johnny Mac. Every liquor, you know, thing gets an event here. And then last, just yesterday, they put up another banner, at least they did take it down, on my block. They hooked it to those old light poles a few years back. That gigantic light on a Sunday broke down right in the crosswalk. Then last year, they went to put it up. I said, "Do not put that up. These lights are old." They put it up in front of Legere and brick wall. They pulled the whole light pole down. And they, you know, and they blame it on, you know, they don't tell Jersey Central that, you know, they put a banner up that pulled it down. So they put another one up. I gave it to them, and I called Jersey Central. I don't want any banners hanging from that old light pole in front of my store. I mean, this is ridiculous. You can't even go to work without being aggravated all the time. What goes on in this town? I need some answers. And I don't want that street closed down for Johnny Mac again. Close down in front of Main Street if he wants to close it off. And I've got many more things to say, but I'm too aggravated tonight.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Let me, the light pole fell down this year or last year?
Last year.
Last year, okay.
But I don't want any more banners up. When you, when these things keep happening, you don't keep hanging more banners.
Who's hanging banners?
They accommodate whoever wants to have...
Who specifically? The chamber?
No, you have to, it has to be approved here.
For the state highway, you need a permit first. Local streets, you don't need a permit. You need city permission. I don't know if city permission was given, we'll check and get back to you. I know we were told the other night, Monday night, that the banner was on downtown, and they took it down because of the highway. I agree. We used to put one across Main Street, and unless it had the vents, it was going to take down those poles.
Our pole is too old for any more, just forget it. I don't want them out there because I'm going to make a problem every time they do it. I saw that light come down, it could have, somebody could have been killed.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I'm just letting you know.
Okay, that's why we said it.
And I'll tell you an answer I got from the city with that one time was, people die every day.
If you could tell us who told you that.
That's a nice answer.
Okay, Jerry, Jerry, no. You got your three minutes of the microphone. Let's address Bess's problems. She had her time, and we're going to give you some answers, and we'll get back to you with some more answers following. The food truck, if you could get us a name, it'd be appreciated. Because I have a problem with food trucks that's coming in in the middle of the night, setting up in front of a bar, making a fortune, and leaving, and they don't get a mercantile license. So if you can get us a name, we can see if they have a mercantile license, and we can follow up with the police department on that. And we can have the police department on weekends patrol...
They called the police. The police were there.
Okay, Bess.
I'm saying they were there.
Okay, we're agreeing with you, we're saying what we're going to do. As far as the last thing you had with the sewer bills, I'll let Michael explain that to you. As far as how we're correcting the sewer bills.
They should be fixed for the next quarter billing. We changed the way that we uploaded the data. So obviously, there's, it's never going to be foolproof, but we think we've knocked out almost 90% of our problems.
I don't understand how I can know my bill when it's right or wrong, and the city doesn't know when it's right or wrong. And I've been through this way back since we had, I can't remember his name.
Bess, Bess, I'm going to cut you off because you made your point, and...
But you know, I've come in, I've said, "Let me come in and show you what I have." I've gotten thrown out of the office, I've gotten, you know...
By the city manager?
No, well, this one, he said, no, he told me, I said, "Well, I'm just going to pay what I know I owe." No, if you don't pay it, you get a tax lien on your house or whatever. I mean, if this isn't right this time, really, I'm calling Kay in your corner, and we can maybe get a real auditor, a real auditor or a, you know, an accountant that can...
A real CMFO.
I mean, I've had it with you too.
If you're at Monday night's meeting, you would have heard that we are advertising for a full-time CMFO. You're absolutely correct. Now, as far as like, you addressed your concerns, we gave you some answers tonight. We'll follow up. The city manager, believe it or not, picks up his own phone, 507-32502-5755. You can talk to him. You, you...
But I don't understand why I can't, they can't figure out how it works.
I'm not going to have a 10-minute dialogue. We're telling you what to do. Please, if somebody tells you whatever they told you, which was totally obnoxious, let us know who told you that. Don't come a month later and say, "Somebody told me this a month ago."
I've been here with Nuccio, with Jesse, who is this Spanish guy years ago that was the director of...
And now, now we're asking us, asking you...
All those times it's been wrong.
To deal with Michael, please. Please. Make an appointment with him, tell him all your concerns. On these, I have them written down. We will follow up and get you answers. I have your phone number. I'll give it to Michael. Make an appointment with the city manager, and we'll follow through and give you anything out of it. We're agreeing with you. We're not fighting with you. We're agreeing with you. We want to correct these mistakes.
And I've actually informed her that if the bill is wrong, still pay the bill so that there's no interest, there's no tax, accelerated tax sale.
And you'll get a credit over your next bill.
And then we could get the credit on the future bill, but we don't want to see someone pay interest because of something. The state law's clear, you have to pay the bill. Pay the bill, and we can either credit, we can do refunds, but it's always safer to pay and then back out of it. And as I've explained here quite often, the method that we're uploading the data now, our test runs have shown that it's been better. And there's going to be some flaws, obviously, when you're dealing with that large dataset. But right now, everything looks to be much more improved, much more streamlined. There's going to be errors, of course, but it looks like it's going to be better.
I mean, I don't understand why there would be errors if they send you over a run...
Okay, okay, okay. I'm going to ask the next speaker.
Three months for a quarter, and they send you four months...
Bess, I'm going to ask you, please sit down and go to the next speaker. Thank you. Warner?
Okay, tough crowd tonight. Hello? I get no respect, never. Okay, Warner Baumgartner, city historian tonight. It's come to my attention that you're looking for a place to put a skate park. So I'd like to give you some thoughts about that. First of all, a little anecdote. Last week, I was driving past Bradley Park, and I saw some kids running, like kind of track-and-field kind of thing, running up and down the trails. I thought, "Oh, this is really great," you know, active use of the park. It's a passive park, but they're appropriately running around in it. Then I saw some kids throwing a javelin. Now, for those who don't know what a javelin is, it's a really large, pointy spear, and could easily kill somebody. So here's kids running around the trails, and another group of kids throwing javelins around the park. Now, this doesn't seem like a too bright an idea to me. The anecdote is supposed to tell you that sometimes active recreation and passive recreation don't mix. This is your dilemma in trying to find a place for a skate park. Some things about the site that's been discussed. The block on Bond Street, which is part of Sunset Park. Originally, that was part of the lake. That block was essentially filled in, and it is the watershed for not only Sunset Lake, but Deal Lake. Something to consider. I did some hunting around on the city maps, and I think I found the ideal location for you. It is, in fact, a public street. Wouldn't cost anything to acquire, you could just deed it over. It's the end of Memorial Drive. The extreme end of Memorial Drive, past Sixth Avenue, actually goes all the way to Deal Lake. And I took a look at it, and you know what's there right now? The school athletic fields are in the middle of Memorial Drive. I don't know how this happened. It was done years ago, and based on my prior experience with the city managing its own assets, I suspect no easement was granted, probably. There was probably no conveyance to the school board of Memorial Drive to build a ball field and a tennis court. So I'm suggesting that you take that road back. Take back Memorial Drive. It's 71 feet wide by 380 feet long, north of Sixth Avenue. All you need to do, if there's no agreement or an easement, tell the school board, "Tough luck. Get your property off it, and we're using it for our skate park." Now, the added benefit is, hey, it's already an athletic field over there. That was Asbury Park's traditional athletic area, before the school board decided, "Well, nobody else can use it," but that's another story. The other added benefit is, there is parking there. There's already parking for athletic activities. So there you go. 71 by 380, Memorial Drive belongs to the city of Asbury Park as a right of way. Tell the school board, get their athletic facilities off it, and build your skate park there. Thank you.
Warner, I would just like to say to you, to me, that's a weapon, if you're throwing it outside, outside an athletic field. So I suggest to you, if you see that happen again, do you call the police?
I did call the police, they responded, and we immediately put a stop to it. Thank you.
We appreciate you looking, and we're looking also. Everybody's looking, I think, this skate park people did an excellent job. Because people are saying, "Put it on Springwood Avenue." The city owns no land on Springwood Avenue. I mean, we've been thrown off the next door, so we can't respond. So I mean, so every time I see somebody over there, "Oh, put it on Springwood Avenue. There's plenty of city-owned land there." There's not a piece of city-owned land that is not under agreement for somebody else to develop. As far as your idea, I got to say, Warner, and I'm going to be very brief. I don't think it's the best idea. I think it's one of the worst ideas I ever heard in my life. You're going to tell us, "Let's throw out Little League baseball," because that's where the Little League baseball plays. You're going to tell us, "Throw out Little League baseball," after Danny McKee spent 12 years and hundreds of thousands of dollars putting up Little League baseball field in. And get rid of the high school tennis courts. I think even the skateboard people would say, "We won't do that." So we appreciate you looking, keep on looking, but, and that is the right of way, it is the city's right of way. But sitting on it is the Little League field, which is, should be more successful in this town. Not because Danny doesn't try, but there's no way I would throw out the Little League field for a skateboard park. And I think the skate park people would probably say, "John, you're absolutely right." But keep on looking.
That's why you have to make partnerships.
Okay, next.
Michael Mills, 3805 Highway 33, Neptune, New Jersey. And I'm joined here by Debra Mejia Reyes. And I just want to send my appreciation to Jet. It's just an honor to be part of such a great program that's really making a difference in Asbury Park and shaping the future of Asbury Park, really. I want to say thank you to Ms. Yvonne Clayton for all her support and just being a great supporter of the organization. I'm joined here by Deir. She's going to speak a little bit about her experience, but I'm going to talk about mine first. It's really welcoming being around such great energy with these kids because their minds are like sponges. Their imaginations are out the roof, as we've seen with some of the businesses that come through. And it's really making a difference. It's not just entrepreneurship, it's life skills, it's communication, it's leadership. It's really building that bridge into the future, and we hope to one day see these kids as business owners downtown. So it's a great program. I'd like to welcome everybody to come out April 9, Maid in Mama Fair. There are three... There are three kids, our three teams are gonna be selling their businesses at the Maiden Mammoth Market Fair. So please come out and support them, um, they need your support. Um, these, this is what we need to do, we need to build that bridge into the future. So I'm gonna let Deira speak about her experience.
Hello, um, I'm Deira, I'm one of the students at the Jett program, and I feel that this program, um, is an amazing program for the city because, 'cause these stays are not really worried about their future. And I feel that this program is helping students, like, see, like, all the opportunities they have in the future, so, thank you.
Future is bright, as you can tell, she just went through the Shark Tank presentation. Uh, we were out, uh, before the presentation doing, um, some warm exercising, breathing deep, you know, hands on the hips, as Jan told us, but, um, you know, our future is bright, and, uh, with, uh, young minds like they are, we're gonna do tremendous things, and we just welcome everybody to support us, so, thank you very much.
Well, I'd like to just, I'd like to just thank you personally, I noticed a few times you was on AP Television, is it you and your brother, or you and your coworker?
No, they call my brother, but we're just looking like.
You guys do a fantastic job, and I think I heard a lot of positive, and, uh, guys, keep up the good work.
Anything we can do for the city.
Also, um, Karen Hayson from AP TV is the person who tapes a lot of the events at the Kula Cafe.
Oh yeah, she does a wonderful job in capturing the moment, trust me, there's a lot of bloopers in there.
Yeah, thank you all.
Tracy Rogers, nine hundred block in Monroe. I wanted to know, there's a block on Langford and Summerfield, it's a block, a lot. I just wanted to know if that was city-owned. If it is, would the city, uh, look to clean it up, and kinda get the trees and the bushes open a lot? Looks like it could have been a house there years ago, but it's two, uh, trees right in the center, so I don't know if it was ever, or it's property, property owner of that, the house next to it. But it's at Langford and Summerfield. And I'm, uh, have sent out the information on the abandoned properties as to what I feel the city should, uh, look to do. And, uh, wanna look to find out when activity is gonna start on taking possession of the homes, and what's the next step forward.
That's it?
Yeah.
Langford and Summerfield, we'll get back to you, I can't picture a lot of time ahead, I know years ago, when I worked for the city, it wasn't city-owned. So I, I don't know what happened, so we'll get back to you on that, and as far as Michael can answer the abandoned properties.
Excuse me. Um, as I've stated, the last two or three meetings, there's been a great interest from developers, I have a meeting tomorrow with one, um, in purchasing a lot of the homes off the list, as I've stated before. The, the abandoned property ordinance is working so far, the, the market is doing what it's supposed to do. There's been interest, people are coming in for permits. We're not at the point where we would recommend to the governing body to do, um, a tax sale, or start, uh, accelerated MREM foreclosure. We've had too much interest in it of the thirty, thirty-five properties where the market's doing what it's supposed to.
As, do you mean, coming in to purchase, who are they gonna purchase it from?
There's two aspects of it, there's one, that is, if you start doing building permits, you're, you get off the list. And two, there's developers that are interested in doing an acquisition. So if there's legitimate interest from the developers, that's when we'll come back to the council, saying, we should start the, the foreclosure process because we have a developer that's interested in these six homes, these three homes, these nine homes. We have to get to that point first, before we just, if we start doing a sale and there's no one interested, it defeats the whole purpose. But we have interest now, we wanna see what people wanna do, wanna see how many they wanna acquire, and as I've been saying, it's gonna take some time, but the process is moving, and it's moving, and moving very well, because there is a lot of interest in, in the list.
But right now, the property can be taken for spot imminent domain, and acquired and rehabbed by a community development corporation. And that's the legal process that you can take, and when you talk about the market, right now, and I think if you have over five hundred thousand homes missing in the state of New Jersey for affordable and low income, why would you dictate to the market, when the city has a right and an ability and a moral obligation, that they have almost three million dollars sitting aside for affordable housing? Why would you say the market dictate?
Because that's what the program is supposed to do.
No, that's not what the program.
That's what you think it's supposed to do, but right now, we have thirty properties, give or take, on the list, and there's been an incredible amount of interest. The interest, the goal of the abandoned property ordinance is to get the properties back up onto a livable.
An immediate process, and the law says the immediate process, spot imminent domain.
Which can be used.
Can be used, so it's not a market.
And as I have just said, we are not at that point ready to recommend that. If we have developers that are interested in the properties, we would much rather have the private sector do the work than the city do the work.
Why, the city is not gonna lose money, because the money's gonna be paid through RCA. Any money that goes in through the person's acquisition, come back to the city on the, on, on the sale. So you're not losing any money.
I, I think this is worthy of you two getting together and having a meeting, because I think if we continue this way, you guys would go back debating it for a half hour, and I'm not gonna let that happen. So I asked you, were you to time up, Michael answered the question, he doesn't believe the city's at the point now to take that road. It's a road you may take down the, down the road, but right now, that's not the option we're going at. So please, by all means, schedule a meeting, and we'll be there.
Okay, I've scheduled a meeting with everyone, because it can be done right now.
A lot of things can be done right now, we could, lady the other night wanted to know if we could pave this way, I said, yeah, we can pave all the streets, and we'll triple everybody's taxes. And I don't think there's a person in this room that would say to do that, so there's a lot of options that can be done, but we have. Okay, again, schedule a meeting, and Michael be there, if you want a councilperson, be there, they will be there also. Thank you, Rita.
Yeah, hi, Rita Morano, Eighth Avenue. Number one, I, the other night, I didn't have a chance to say this, but why are we putting bathrooms in the park? I, I think that's very bad. Go look at the water park and look at their bathrooms, and you'll see that they're gonna be wrecked in no time. I went with a reporter one day to the water park. There was no toilet paper, there was no paper towels, there was no soap, and the doors were wide open and broken. And that's gonna happen in the park, too. There's no bathrooms in any of our parks, why would you think of putting them there? Especially since you're gonna have overruns, you said. I thought that's what you said, John, that we're gonna have overruns in the park, and you, you were upset about that Monday night, right? And then the other thing I wanted to say, why do we have to hire a professional to get a CFO? I thought our city manager was the professional. And I, I thought that you were a CFO, too, is that correct?
No.
No? You just took courses?
That'll finish me.
No, but why do we have to hire a professional? He's the professional. That's ridiculous. He does all the hiring and firing, but of course, we don't use the firing word, nobody ever gets fired. And thirdly, I wanna know, how's the mercantile licenses doing, and the dog licenses? What's going on with that? I heard Amy say something about, uh, you sent out another notice, two notices? The other thing you can do, what other towns do, is go out with a policeman, take Denise Brown upstairs, and go down to the stores, and padlock them if they don't pay their mercantile license. They'll pay it fast enough then. You can't just send a warning, these people know that they could get away with it. You just formed a business group, how about forming a taxpayers' group? The businesses will take care of themselves, they know what to do. I was in business for twenty-two years in the worst section of Asbury at that time, now it's the best. But you just can't keep hiring people, a professional, to get a CFO. I think the city manager is capable of doing that. No? Yes?
That's it.
The bathrooms in the park, come on.
The entire council thought it was the right thing to do, and I would say ninety-five percent of the public, except you and maybe four other percent, is saying it's the wrong thing to do, so the majority of the people felt the bathroom was necessary, and I totally agree.
And there's gonna be concerts and a stage there, Rita, where do you want people to go to the bathroom? I mean, when they're there for a two-hour concert, right?
Believe me, go look at the bathrooms in the water park.
I, I, I've been to the water park, I have not gone to the bathrooms in the water park.
Well, you don't have to go, you can just visit.
The, the, the amount of people who go to the water park, and, and the amount of people in shows, and concerts, and, and movies, and everything else that's gonna take place in Springwood Avenue, I don't think it's a hard ask for a bathroom, okay, I think it's pretty reasonable.
Okay, you'll see. I've been right before. I, I think I have enough experience to know.
Agreed.
That the bathrooms, and there's no bathrooms down in Sunset Park, we have events all the time. Atlantic Park, they don't have any bathrooms.
Well, they go to, they all go to, to Convention Hall and use the bathroom, and there's bathrooms all on the boardwalk, what are you talking about? There's bathrooms behind Pucker, there is, I don't know, fifteen women's stalls, which is the only bathrooms I've been in in Convention Hall. I mean, to say there's no bathrooms when we do shows at Bradley Park.
And you're gonna have to maintain them, besides.
Okay, Rita, your time's up, so.
Okay.
We're trying to answer some of your questions.
All right, the answer?
The answer is, like, the bathroom is gonna be in, the bathroom is gonna be in Springwood Avenue Park. As far as cost overruns, if we elected to take all the alternates, there could have been overrun, so some of the alternates are not gonna be done. So there won't be no cost overruns, it would be illegal to have a cost overrun at Springwood Avenue Park. We have to certify the monies there before we can authorize somebody to start building, so it has to be certified. Michael, you wanna explain the theories why we're hiring a firm for less than five thousand dollars to help us find a qualified CMFO, something the city has not had in how many years? So we, we think it's money well worth spent.
Well, the easy answer is because the reputation of the city is crap. Pure and simple, it's going to be next to impossible to find someone just by throwing an ad out in the paper. I'll tell you the story, when, last month, I went to the Mammoth County Administrator's luncheon. I walk in, walked in a couple minutes late, said, I'm Michael from the city of Asbury Park. Everyone started laughing, the first words out of their mouth was, who's been arrested this month? To get someone who's of high quality, you need a recruiter. You need someone who's gonna be able to go out there and find the assistant CFO in, in another municipality, who's gonna have a database of people, the firm, Phoenix Consulting, led by John Reinhardt, he teaches the state exam, he grades the state exam. He has a database of everyone who's taken the state exam in the last ten, fifteen years. He teaches, um, numerous continuing education classes, where he has that database of people. He's in the borough of Wharton, he also consults in six other places. We need someone who's more than just throwing an ad out there in the paper, we need someone who's gonna be able to sit down with people, who's been in this field for twenty years, who's one of the most respected and best CFOs in the state of New Jersey, to do this, because the city's reputation is horrible. Everyone still has the perception that the city is corrupt. We're a transitional aid municipality, which makes it much more difficult to, to attract talent. We need someone who's gonna be able to go there and knock on doors, and find the best of the best, who has a database of people, who knows people, who can do this work. This is one of the most important positions in the city, as you know, you've said to yourself, you think the city needs a full-time CFO.
Yes.
We need someone full-time. The state has signed off on John's work, they've seen his work, it is fantastic work. We can't just do this ourselves, because putting an ad in the paper, or the League of Municipalities, or the Government Finance Officers Association, it's gonna take more than that, it's gonna take him making the phone calls of who he knows in the financial world, world, to get someone here to do what the city needs.
Well, we got a professional for the parking authority, and that didn't work out. That didn't work out.
Okay, your time's up, Rita. Motion to close, move it.
Second.
All in favor? Seconds and minutes, I have three sets this evening, I have March fourteen, two thousand and six workshop, March sixteen, two thousand and sixteen executive session, March sixteen, two thousand and sixteen regular session, can I have a motion to approve?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton? Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Moore?
Yes.
I don't care, you know, I don't care, Cindy.
We have a consent agendas this evening. I'll read all the, uh, items on the consent agenda. Two thousand and sixteen, one fifty-eight, approving special events, wedding applications as presented on March twenty, two thousand and sixteen. Two thousand and sixteen, one fifty-nine, resolution authorizing a payment payroll in an amount of eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand. One twenty-four point fifty-two. Two thousand and sixteen, one sixty, approving social affairs permit for Asbury Park Music Foundation for an event on April eighth and ninth, two thousand and sixteen. Two thousand and sixteen, one sixty-one, approving social affairs permit for New Jersey Hall of Fame for an event on April seventh, two thousand and sixteen. Two thousand and sixteen, one sixty-two, resolution to credit sewer account for thirteen oh seven, Fourth Avenue. Two thousand and sixteen, one sixty-three, resolution to credit sewer account for eight oh six, eight oh eight, Fifth Avenue. Two thousand and sixteen, one sixty-four, resolution authorizing cancellation of municipal tax sales certificates due to erroneous block and lot. Two thousand and sixteen, one sixty-five, resolution authorizing issuance of certificate of redemption of tax sales certificates due to inability to locate the original tax sales certificates. Two thousand and sixteen, one sixty-six, resolution establishing a service charge for return checks or written instruments. Two thousand and sixteen, one sixty-seven, resolution providing for fees for tax sales certificate redemption calculations. Two thousand and sixteen, one sixty-eight, resolution of the city of Asbury Park, County of Mammoth, state of New Jersey, authorizing premium eche, echeats to municipality after five years. Two thousand and sixteen, one sixty-nine, resolution authorizing installation of surveillance cameras and associated hardware along existing utility pools in the public right-of-way for the city of Asbury Park. Two thousand and sixteen, one seventy, authorizing appointments to the Parking Advisory Committee. Two thousand and sixteen, one seventy-one, is authorizing or appointing Michael Capabianco as temporary purchasing agent as per the guidelines of F, or LFN, two thousand and twelve oh nine. Would anybody like any of those items removed off the consent agenda? Motion to approve?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions, first one's two thousand and sixteen, one seventy-two, which is a resolution authorizing a payment of bills in the amount of one million fifty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. Mayor Moore indicated to me earlier, he will be sustaining from, uh, item six dash oh one dash twenty-three dash two twenty dash zero 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 dash two zero nine, or any other, uh, discussion, or, or, actually, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or, uh, questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Council, uh, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore, without abstention?
Yes.
Two thousand and sixteen, one seventy-three, resolution approving person-to-person transfer to Petty Pound Paradise LLC, from Empress Hotel LLC. License number thirteen oh three dash thirty-six dash oh thirty, oh sixty-eight dash zero zero one, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and sixteen, one seventy-four, resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park, acting as a waterfront redevelopment entity, authorizing the release of a letter of credit from Asbury Partners LLC, and authorizing an agreement regarding the same, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and sixteen, one seventy-five, resolution to adopt policies and procedures manual, can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution two thousand and sixteen, one seventy-six, awarding contract for phase two of the Springwood Avenue Park project, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and sixteen, one seventy-seven, authorizing the award of contract regarding operation of pedal boat concessions on a portion of Wesley Lake. This is what Fred discussed earlier, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances, first reading. Ordinance two thousand and sixteen, twelve, and ordinance repealing chapter three, police regulations, section thirty-eight, use of bicycles, and replacing said section in the entirety with use of bicycle, roller skates, and skateboard of the code of the city of Asbury Park. Can I have a motion? Have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Just blame that one, please.
Michael?
It amends our, our police regulations for the use of bicycles, skateboards, scooters to comport with the state law. This will allow us, in the event that the police officers, um, pull someone over for improper use of a bike, we can write a local ticket instead of a state ticket.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for this ordinance for April thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Ordinance, two thousand and sixteen, thirteen approving adopting an amendment to the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for this ordinance is for April thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Ordinance, two thousand and sixteen, fourteen bond ordinance providing for improvements to municipal parks and buildings by and in the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, re-appropriating excess bond proceeds in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty cents from bond ordinance number twenty-eight seventy-eight to finance the costs thereof. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing for this ordinance is scheduled for April thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Now on to second reading, public hearing. Ordinance, two thousand and sixteen, seven, an ordinance amending and supplementing Article Eight Authorities, Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Volunteers Creating a New Section Two Dash Fifty-Nine Beach Utility. Have a motion to open ordinance, two thousand and sixteen, oh seven, to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor? Unclosed.
Yes. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. How is the beach currently operated? Under what structure?
Is that the only question? You got more? Well, on this one, he has as much time as he wants, sir.
Yeah.
Look, I forgot.
It currently falls under public works. Public works.
Public works? The beach is a part of public works as a municipal department?
Quasi-department. This clears it up. It puts it under public works and creates the utility, yes.
And how does a utility differ from the way it works currently? Those monies go back into operating the beach or do they come to the city to pay debt?
They operate the beach.
So, it will remain essentially as it is currently?
Yes.
All beach revenue will be returned to running the beach?
Yes.
Okay. Can it be structured in some other fashion where some of that revenue comes back to the city to lower taxes?
No.
No? Okay. Thanks.
Motion to close.
Move it. Second. Have a motion to adopt ordinance, two thousand and sixteen, oh seven.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance, two thousand and sixteen, oh eight approving and adopting an amendment to the Central Business District Redevelopment Plan relating to the subdivision of Overlook Park. Motion to open ordinance, two thousand and sixteen, oh eight, to the public?
Move it.
Second.
Yes. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. Um, I've been following this saga of dividing up the park for some time and it seems like an appropriate measure to take considering its current use as a gravel parking lot. Uh, one thing I'm concerned about, um, I don't know why we keep renaming things in Asbury or getting things wrong. This is actually Kennedy Park. It's always been called Kennedy Park. And I don't know how it got to be referred to as Overlook Park. Now, you may say, "Oh, that's really getting nitpicky. That really doesn't matter." Well, Chief Ketti called me many months ago and asked me, "Gee, is it Monroe Avenue or is it Monroe Avenue?" Well, it matters. Somehow Monroe Avenue got renamed to Monroe in the course of things. So, what's going to happen next? Is Cookman going to get accidentally renamed to Bookman? Is Bangs-
Warner. You have to address the ordinance.
I know.
You're making, you're making a speech?
Yeah, I'm making a speech. I, I'd like to know-
I agree with your speech, but you have to address the ordinance.
Okay. How can we get the name fixed in the ordinance? Because there is no such park as Overlook Park.
Cross-out park.
Huh? Overlook. It's Kennedy Park.
Well, the, let me see. One, two, three, four, five. Sixth whereas clause says AKA Kennedy Park.
Yeah, it does.
It's referenced with the dual-
I understand it. But how, how do we permanently fix it so that this doesn't keep cropping up? We have to write overlook, AKA Kennedy. Is there some mechanism, some legal mechanism to actually make the name stick? So, you don't have to keep calling it AKA. That's, that's my only concern. Um, oh, no. One other thing. I did notice, uh, there was some signage put up on that, on that property already. Has it already been conveyed? Has it changed hands already?
It has not.
Okay. Well, there's already two signs in the public right-of-way that say, "Private parking. Don't park here." So, I think your coder zoning people need to look into who put the signs up there. Uh, number one, they're in a public right-of-way, uh, which they shouldn't be. And number two, since they don't own the lot yet, how are they claiming you can't park there because it's privately owned?
The, the signs were up many months ago and we told them, take them down. They did take them down. So, I don't know if these are new ones, different ones or what. So, we'll look at-
Motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
Motion to adopt ordinance, two thousand and sixteen, oh eight?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.